Hi, I'm Joyce Waterman, Council President of the City of Jersey City. And tonight, I have three lovely ladies, and we will discuss right to counsel ordinance that the council is reviewing at this time.
Burns Brothers Memorials, Monuments and Markers, 787 Tunley Avenue, Jersey City, Hudson County's only monument maker, serving all fates and cemeteries. Design studio and large inventory onsite. Cemetery inscriptions and custom orders welcome. Burns Brothers Memorials, Monuments and Markers, 787 Tunley Avenue, just south of Seacorke's Road. Craftsmanship that will last for all eternity. Burns Brothers, Jersey City, Albert H. Hopper, North Arlington. Visit us on the net.
Stevens Jersey City Ford, certified parts and service located at Route 440 in Communipaw Ave is your number one source for Ford and Lincoln automotive needs. We use certified Ford Motocraft products to keep your Ford running in top shape. Motocraft parts are backed with the Ford warranty, which includes a two-year unlimited mileage guarantee. Our team will have the right Motocraft part to ensure the best performance from your Ford or Lincoln. You can order in person at the parts counter or online. Let us help keep your Ford or Lincoln in the best shape at Stevens Jersey City Ford.
Welcome back, and we will have our discussion on right to counsel. And today, I have three lovely ladies with me who are expert in their field. And at this time, I would like them to introduce themselves. Roberta, won't we start with you and introduce yourself, and then we'll go right around to Julia and to Wendy?
Sure. My name is Roberta Tarkin. I am a solo practitioner attorney in Jersey City. I've been concentrating in landlord-tenant law for about 23 years. And I'm in landlord-tenant court practically every day during the week.
Yeah, Julia?
Hello, my name is Julia Take. I am the media and communications coordinator of the Right to Counsel campaign, which is a coalition and volunteer activist-based campaign of organizers who have been fighting for right to counsel and were able to turn this campaign into the ordinances that we're going to be talking about presented today. And we wanted to run this campaign because we want to address the affordability crisis and also the lack of protections that tenants have available to them in Jersey City.
Thank you. Wendy?
Thank you, Council President. My name is Wendy Paul. I serve as the Executive Director of the Jersey City Apartment Owners Association. I represent property owners for the multifamily community throughout Jersey City and all facets of the ecosystem.
Well, thank you, ladies. And Roberta, I would like to start with you, since you are in the courts, you know, probably every day. Would you let the audience know the process that it takes to evict a person from your dwelling?
So, most cases are non-payment of rent cases. And unless the lease requires, and really, I haven't seen any that do, a notice is not required, you can just file a complaint. Ever since COVID, the courts have developed the e-court system for filing the complaints. Now, we just file a complaint, and the court then processes a summons that take the data that we enter. It's very, it's labor-intensive for a law firm, but we enter data with a complaint, and then it's processed through the e-courts and then served upon the tenants. Once the tenants are served, they'll have a docket number, and they'll usually, the process now is they are notified at some point of a case management conference. Something new, again, that came after the COVID system, it's an extra level to try to see if cases can settle. We didn't have that before COVID, but after COVID, they developed that. The case management conferences are held remotely, so you can use, do it by phone or Zoom video, that's how it is in Hudson County. And if it doesn't settle from the case management conference, it will be set down for trial. My experience is about, I would say, 20%, about 20% do settle from a case management conference. So, it does then weed out some cases that will not be sent to trial. And then at trial, we're notified to go to trial, to the court, and it's in-person. It was remote during the COVID period, but now it's in-person. We do have the ability to have things remote, such as order to show causes. I have seen some parties who have medical issues, and they've asked to be involved remotely, and the courts will generally agree to that. But otherwise, it's in-person, and you're set down for a trial, a call. In Hudson County, we have a call, and, oh, actually, you check in, I should say. You check in, and then if you have not, if you're a plaintiff, being the landlord, and your tenant does not check in, you get a default. If the tenant checks in and the plaintiff has not, the landlord has not checked in, then the case is dismissed. If everyone checks in, it's sent to a mediator, which is again, just like the case management system, it's again, we try to see if we can settle. And cases often, often do settle from the mediation, it's much more from the case management conference. And if it doesn't settle, you're sent to a judge for a trial.
Well, I hear you keep using the word "case management." And for the audience, explain exactly what is a case manager? Do they have a person there with them? Or is that an invisible somebody that, you know, that that's not there, and they're just being, you know, going before the judge or whoever they're going for by themselves?
So, the case management conference that's held remotely, which is the first interaction with the court system after they're served with the summons and complaint, they're remote. And the person who runs that is a, I'm not really sure what they're called, a case management conference facilitator, I'm not really sure of the exact name, but it's a person who will have the parties, the plaintiffs and defendants, join in through Zoom. Every county does it differently. I have seen some counties, like in Warren, where every 15 minutes, they have a different case. I have seen Essex have 150 cases all scheduled for 9:00 AM. I've seen, I like Hudson's system, which is basically something like, they'll have 9:00, they'll have perhaps about 10 cases, so it's more manageable. But you do have to go along with the system of that particular county. But you will get information on that. You will, now that most people have emails, the landlord, when they enter the data of the landlord, the landlord's attorney, let's say, or the landlord itself, is supposed to enter data regarding the tenant. And that enables the court to interact with the tenant, to contact the tenant by phone, by email. So, it's really a great, it's great that people have emails, and now, the tenants will absolutely get the notices. They can't say, "I didn't come in the mail." They get the emails.
All right. So, we're going to hold that thought, and we'll be right back. And then Julia, I want you to jump in, because I'm still looking for a visible person to be there, you know, because I know it's like a case management, but we'll be right back.
Consumer Carpets, 3408 Kennedy Boulevard in the Jersey City Heights, your one-stop store for residential and commercial floor treatments. Carpeting, linoleum, tiles, laminates, hardwood floors, area rugs, remnants, all major brands, all in stock. Free estimates, same-day installation. Consumer Carpets, it's savings, selection, installation, credit cards and debit cards accepted, financing available. Consumer Carpets, price to fit your budget, installation to fit your schedule. On the net at consumercarpets.com. Consumer Carpets, Jersey City, 201-792-2712.
Well, we're back, and let's just piggyback on that case management. And Julia, you know, let's hear your thoughts on it, because I know she keeps saying case management, and I'm trying to figure out, when does a person actually have legal representation? And you are advocating for people to have legal representation, so.
Yes. Thank you so much, Madam President. So, something that I, that stuck out to me from Mrs. Tarkin's statement was talking about sort of weeding out cases that don't go to trial. And typically, when we see attorneys, or excuse me, typically when we see tenants having representation, there's a better chance that, you'll see settlements, there's a better chance that attorney, that these cases won't even go to trial, because landlords won't go through the process of filing an eviction that may be frivolous, that they may realize that they might lose because a tenant has representation. And that's basically what we're trying to do here. We're trying to balance the scales, because as of right now, if a tenant is entering housing court, there's a very good chance that they're going to be left unrepresented and will have to be their own advocates. So, the split nationwide is that about 3% of tenants receive representation in housing court, whereas about 80% of landlords do. And that is a very stark difference, and automatically sets up a great deal of inequality and a great deal of unfairness for the tenant. So, we just want to balance the scales and make sure that the fight is fair when tenants are facing eviction, and other cases as well, because it's not just the eviction notice that represents being evicted. You could be soft evicted, you could experience other issues with your landlord, like habitability issues, them not keeping up the basic standards of living within your apartment, and having someone on your side to fight is really crucial.
Well, Wendy, I know you represent landlords, so let's get you in this conversation, because you see it from a landlord perspective. So, what do you feel about the case management and landlord representation, that type of thing?
Absolutely. Thank you, Council President. One of the recent op-ed that we put out with the issues that we have with the ordinances, and the two ordinances, but particularly with the development impact fee. We feel it's flawed on four main points. Points number one and number two, to quickly put those out. Number one, tens of millions of dollars are being generated through these fees for residential and non-residential development to provide access to lawyers. However, when someone is facing eviction, as Julia went through and the process that Ms. Tarkin discussed, they need assistance. And landlords are looking to provide that relief to their, you know, tenant if they're making those arrangements. However, this, these fees are not going to assistance. They are not providing any relief for the tenant. Number two, of those fees that are being raised, and the program doesn't go into effect until 2026, two years from now, the monies are going to lawyers. So, tens of millions of dollars are being raised to go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is great. Millions of dollars are being funded to go from these developments to lawyers not providing any assistance. And number three of this plan, the fees are going to be passed on to the renters. So, the unintended consequence is in fact driving up the affordability issue, making it more expensive while we already know that we have a supply issue. So, with these fees, and it's not providing any assistance, we are signaling to any development that is coming that Jersey City is closed for business. Yes, we have a supply and demand issue, but the regulatory process to create more housing becomes more of a problem. And lastly, when this was presented, the landlords, the property owners, residential and non-residential, found out about it on the ordinances, and there was no conversation with the stakeholders, no conversations with the property owners, how a tenant would be affected, how anyone in Jersey City. It was just put on the agenda, which I understand that is part of the process, but even starting to have the conversation with the stakeholders to say, "This is what we are proposing," and trying to find that avenue to work together as opposed to more barriers to entry is part of the problem. So, we want to see a solution come in, but if someone is facing eviction, if someone is falling on tough times, things happen, you mentioned a medical issue, landlords, you know, good landlords are going to try to do the right thing and put things in place. But this process is flawed entirely by not having the conversation to figure out what are some other alternatives, as opposed to making it seem that Jersey City does not want to have any more development, therein creating more of a problem. And if these fees do get passed, it is the tenants that are paying for it, and when we hear no impact to taxpayers, renters are taxpayers, property owners are taxpayers, and ultimately, that's who will pay for these fees.
Well, we just started the conversation, and you know what? You could see, it's going to be good. Everybody's standing their ground, but we'll be right back just to pick it up, to see how far we're going to go with tenant and landlord.
Panapinto Properties, Jersey City, shaping the workplace with state-of-the-art office spaces and addresses your company desires. Building residences that define your home environment, adjacent to all modes of transportation with onsite marketing available. The right address, the right lease. Call 201-521-9000 or visit online at panapintodevelopment.com. Panapinto Properties, building Jersey City for everyone.
We're back, and when you deal with the right to counsel, the whole issue is representation. And so, Roberta, off the air, you were saying that residents do have some type of representation, so explain that to us.
Yes, sure.
And then I'll give you a chance, Julia, to respond.
I represent landlords and tenants, but there's no question, I represent more landlords than tenants. When I'm in court representing a landlord, I find that most of the tenants have attorneys. Many of them are through the organizations that provide counsel. I believe they may be free or maybe at a very small fee, Legal Services, Northeast Legal Services. We have the Waterfront Project, and then we have Mayor Stack or Senator Stack's, organization that provides attorneys to tenants, and I think, I don't think income is based, is a part of it at all. So, when I go to court, I anticipate that the tenant will probably have an attorney, because that's been my experience. That's why I have issues with the right to counsel, because as I see it, right now, the tenants have counsel. And I find that some of my clients are more needy in that they have small buildings, can't really afford attorneys, but will get lost in the system. And I have had people come to me and say, you know, "I did file, and my case got dismissed because I did this wrong. I need a lawyer." And so, the small, but they're having trouble because they have tenants in their small building who haven't paid rent for a long time. And they have their taxes and their mortgages to pay, and I don't see any of those entities saying, "Oh, we'll give you six months to pay that." So, the landlords that I represent, many of them, have a lot of problems that have developed due to the COVID, post-COVID, and also an attitude that certain tenants have, which is that, "I don't have to pay."
So, you're saying is, you deal with landlords who's not as wealthy?
I deal with, I deal with both, I have some clients that are wealthy, but I deal with plenty that are not.
Okay, so, those who are not wealthy, you're saying that they also need representation, and they really can't afford it neither?
100% they do, because when the tenant has an attorney, they give the runaround to that landlord, and that's why people have come to me who have their cases dismissed. You know, the attorneys, they learn its strategy, and any lawyer will tell you what you do is strategy. Delay helps a tenant. You know, I've had plenty of times where tenants tried to adjourn, and I immediately join in, and I, you have to give me a really good reason, and it's unlikely you're going to have one, and I will not permit it. But if the landlord doesn't step in, it's going to get adjourned.
Okay, now, okay, we see landlords need representation, but we are concerned about pretty much the tenants who need representation, because when they stand before a judge, they don't have the representation based on the statistics and things like that. Am I correct, Julia?
Yes, exactly. We really want to focus the conversation on tenants and the fact that they are oftentimes left alone. And Waterfront and these other legal service providers, we all acknowledge in the campaign, Councilwoman Gilmore, Councilwoman Saleh, Councilwoman Solomon, all acknowledge that they do incredible work. However, they are not built to fit, to meet every single, the need of every single tenant in Jersey City. They're built in order to fulfill the needs of people of certain incomes, and that's why it was really important for us from the get-go to pass a right to counsel that had a universal, that had universal language in it, so we could make sure that every person who requires an attorney in housing court could be provided that at the point of service. And I would like to address the issue about non-payment of rent. So, at the end of the day, it's true, the law is the law, but the, I want to clear the record about the developer fee ordinance. So, this is a 1.5% fee, one-time fee of the equalized assessed value on any project. It's a minuscule fee, but in the grand scheme of things, on this, on a large scale, that means $20 million are going to be raised a year for the Affordable Housing Trust. And just one, out of every $4 that's raised for the Affordable Housing Trust, only $1 goes to the Right to Counsel program directly. The other 80% goes towards, as I've mentioned before, Affordable Housing Trust, so that means maintenance and building of new affordable housing. When we talk about the housing shortage, for example, I think that it's really important to frame it as a shortage of affordable units, units that make living in Jersey City accessible for people who have lived there for a long time. And at least 30% of the amount that is generated by these fees has to go towards some form of rental assistance program. So, this is direct rental payments for tenants, money that will go in the hands of tenants who need the ability to pay rent when they're struggling to make ends meet, because there's a billion reasons why someone may not be able to pay rent during a certain month. Many people might be one paycheck away, one missed paycheck away from eviction, and it also helps with security deposits, it helps with maintenance of the apartments. This is going to help close that gap, as I mentioned before, when tenants are not realizing that their landlords have their best interests, and they can have not only the representation they needed in court, but also the material help to keep their homes affordable and well-maintained.
Well, there you have it. We will be right back, and we will discuss Affordable Housing Trust Fund, because when you deal with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, it was built to, for those who are low and moderate income. Now, if we do a universal, you know, right to counsel, that takes it to another level. So, we'll be right back.
Newport, the luxury waterfront community on the Hudson River, offers a quality of life you deserve in one of our many high-rise towers. With amenities such as the onsite Newport Path, Light Rail, Newport Town Square, three playgrounds, Dog Run, upscale restaurants, retail giants like Kohl's, JCPenney, Macy's, and Target. Morton Williams and Acme Supermarket are just outside your front door. A health and fitness center, skating rink, and medical facilities are also onsite. Enjoy the New York skyline from our waterfront and various parks. Manhattan is just one path stop away, or quick ride through the Holland Tunnel. Nursery and private elementary schools, all onsite. Twelve-screen movie theater at the Newport Center Mall. Looking to visit? Stay at the Westin or Marriott Hotel. For more information, visit us at newportnj.com. Make lasting memories to cherish forever. It's incredible. It's you. Newport, live like you want.
Well, we're back, and we're still discussing the RTC, which is Right to Counsel. And when we was off the air, I know there was, we had this conversation concerning, will this affect one-to-four family units or one-to-four family homes? And the question is, yes, it will. When you create a law, you have to be very careful, because you can't exempt certain things in law. I'm quite sure you know that. You're a lawyer, and we don't want no person to, you know, come against us saying, you know, we have favoritism or anything like that.
We have a rent control that doesn't apply to one-to-four. So, we do, we have exemptions in the law all the time.
Okay, so, can we exempt one-to-two?
I think you could.
You think we could?
Yes.
And it would be a problem?
I think you could, just like in the anti eviction statute. We exempt owner occupied two or three.
Okay.
The rent control exempts the one, two, three, and four in Jersey City. Every town is different. Now, you know, certain towns, they're not, but Jersey City, they are. So, I think if you have, there is, I think, a good reason to do so, some of the reasons that I mentioned, that they're more, they're more in line with the mom-and-pop, small-time landlord who doesn't have the resources of the big developer.
Okay.
And so, you don't need to have that, the RTC for that.
Okay, from one-to-four. So, what do you think about it, Wendy? Because you represent landlords.
And this, herein lies the problem, because when we're looking at the entire multifamily community, we are talking about the two, three, four-family homeowners, property owners, as well as the larger buildings. And when policy changes for the different buildings or the different units, or maybe one property owner has a couple of dozen units spread throughout the city, then the rules change. Is it cumulative? Is it individual? Is it by address? And the policy doesn't allow for that. And again, I cannot stress this enough, it is the mom-and-pops that are going to be affected even before right to counsel is put in place or anything else, because these fees are collected on the land assessed value, and Julia went through, through some of the math, but 50% is collected upfront when someone gets the permit, and then the remainder, based on what the value of the land is after construction. So, that is even more money that'll be collected should, should this ordinance go through. But with the calculations that Julia just went through, again, it does not have any rent relief, rental assistance right now, and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund exists right now. That's something, you know, $4 and how many dollars are going to go towards assistance, sounds great. However, relief can be provided today, right now, should you still choose Council President along with your esteemed fellow council members. But having to wait for that relief, the city can do those programs. We saw that it was possible with COVID. We saw that the city provided rental assistance to the people who needed it, especially at the need. We need to look at and have real discussions, find real solutions that we can implement at the city level, appeal to the state level, as well as the federal level, to provide that assistance, because the ultimate problem is a tenant falling on hard times, needing assistance, and having that relief so that small landlord, Roberta's clients, for example, know that they can work with their tenant as they are looking to get the rental assistance, as opposed to having this fund be collected for two years to get a lawyer, and even the best lawyer, Roberta's and all the like, can slow down the process. But ultimately, if a tenant does not have the money to pay and catch up on their rent, the process will still continue. We are looking for a solution that will provide that assistance, not another regulatory hurdle that is going to discourage further development and provide more housing to the supply that is desperately needed.
Julia, what do you have to say about just her statement, as she said, concerning the rented relief?
So, Ms. Paul, it sounds like the two of us are on the same page when it comes to increasing rental relief to tenants, and that is something that is quite literally written into the developer fee ordinance. As I mentioned before, 30% of the money that's generated has to go towards some form of rental assistance programs. And I think that this is also a way to help ease the concerns of small landlords. I don't have the data off the back of my hand. I don't know necessarily, tenants who live in smaller buildings, maybe also tend to be lower income, but if that's the case, if they are provided with this rental assistance, then that not only benefits them, it also benefits their landlords, because they have this assistance to be able to make ends meet. And on the topic of small landlords, I think we should be very wary of anything that might nickel and dime and reduce the amount of money that we're already planning on raising through the developer fee ordinance. And I think that also, we need to remember that this ordinance will not apply to people who already provide affordable housing, so that doesn't hurt the affordable housing supply in that case. And also, the conversations around mom-and-pop landlords, a lot of times, they obscure the fact that some of these smaller units are actually owned by large development companies, Dixon Leasing being one of them, owning a lot of these one-to-four units across, and they should be subject to the same restrictions as a larger development company. And the fact that a lot of these smaller units, the tenants are not subject to the Anti-Eviction Act, to me, that's an argument for more representation for these tenants that might otherwise be unprotected.
Well, we'll be, we'll be right back. We have, we have to go to a commercial break, but we'll be right back.
Stevens Jersey City Ford, certified parts and service located at Route 440 in Communipaw Ave is your number one source for Ford and Lincoln automotive needs. We use certified Ford Motocraft products to keep your Ford running in top shape. Motocraft parts are backed with the Ford warranty, which includes a two-year unlimited mileage guarantee. Our team will have the right Motocraft part to ensure the best performance from your Ford or Lincoln. You can order in person at the parts counter or online. Let us help keep your Ford or Lincoln in the best shape at Stevens Jersey City Ford.
We're back, and Roberta, I know you wanted to make a comment. Well, New Jersey has what's called the Anti-Eviction Statute, also known as the Eviction for Cause, and it applies to all apartments, all buildings, other than two- or three-family owner occupied. However, if you are in a one, two, or three-family that's not owner occupied, you can be evicted because either a buyer or an owner wants to move in, has to be an individual. We do have, I think that is an unbelievable protection for tenants, they in essence have perpetual tenancies in the state of New Jersey. A lot of people don't realize, they think that when a lease is over, they have to move out, and that is just not true in the state of New Jersey. We also have these other protections that you can come up with the rent up to three days after the lockout. This is very unusual, but it's fairly recent law, that was proposed by Mayor Stack, it was enacted. Three days after the lockout, you can come up with the money, and the landlord has to let you back in. And the court has jurisdiction after a lockout of 10 days. So, we have, we do have a lot of good laws for tenants in New Jersey.
You know, with the right to counsel, based on your experience, because you're advocating for it throughout the country, how often can a tenant apply for right to counsel in the states that is issued in? Like, let's say I deal, you deal with a tenant who have to go through right to counsel, and then you resolve that problem, and then let's say, six months down the road, the tenant has a problem again, could they? Could they, based on your experience, they should be able to apply again to right to counsel?
Based on that experience, I, in my personal capacity, would answer yes. I, I think that they should be able to. I do not have the number off the top of my head about what different cities and the statutes are, what they involve with regards to reapplying for right to counsel. But I think that what's underneath this conversation is the idea of the fact that people are going to be afraid that the services will be limited. Right, that they need to apply again because they might be rejected. And that's why it's been really important for us to fight for a, an ordinance that would ensure that all tenants are protected, to get rid of some of that burdensome, onerous process of having to apply for service, having to showcase proof of income, for instance. That can be a very costly and timely procedure. And for folks who maybe do not have proper documentation, for example, maybe undocumented immigrants who might not have the proper documentation necessary to showcase that they've, you know, earned a certain wage, for instance. That can make it really hard to apply for assistance. So getting rid of those barriers from the start was something that we really wanted to focus on. And like Mrs. Harkan said, we do have a lot of good laws in Jersey about, that protect tenants. Unfortunately, in Jersey City and in other cities that don't have right to counsel, we have no way of enforcing them. And on the topic of consulting with relevant stakeholders, we have spent this campaign speaking to an upwards of thousands of tenants. We have been knocking on doors, we have been going and having phone banks, we have been hosting events, tenants' town halls, open forums. And this gives folks a chance to talk about their experiences renting in Jersey City and what it's been like facing something like landlord retaliation, for example, where they reach out to the landlord and they ask frequently for maintenance, for codes and different items in the building to be addressed. They don't get addressed and then they receive a retaliatorally high, I'm not sure retaliatory is a word, but unconsciously, unconsciously high rent increase. So inconscientably high rent increase. That, that happens all over the city. People getting pushed out in order to develop buildings and then increase rents for the next tenants. And also cases where I've knocked on the door of tenants and they've opened the door and the only way that they were able to heat their house was by having the oven open and by having all four burners on the stove on. Because the landlord isn't there to fix those issues. Those are serious habitability issues that push people out of their homes. And without lawyers fighting in the court of these tenants, then you're not going to see any of these issues be resolved.
So when, go ahead. Do you like to say something? I don't want to cut anybody off.
One correction is the conversation with the stakeholders that I was mentioning are the stakeholders that are paying this fee. Currently, development funds, and there are other fees that go directly into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. When I say the conversations with the stakeholders, the stakeholders that are paying that 1.5, 2.5% proposed fee that is being presented. Further, everything that you are pointing out, when someone has hard time, if there was a process, as we saw, where someone can go and say, "I'm having a hard time with my rent," before it gets to a situation that they need counsel, if there was a solution that provides that, that mitigates having to go through that process. And for the bad actors, for the bad landlords, and that's horrible, for people that are in that situation, inspectors are needed to go after slum lords that are affecting people's life that are in these homes. So I agree with you there, but for the stakeholders that are being made to pay this fee, should this get passed, those are the stakeholders that would be having these conversations, conversations to say, "How about we look at this solution?" Okay, if this happens to this person, what other arrangements can we make? Can we change part of their rent so they can get caught up? This should be the last step, not the first step. Rental assistance should be something that tenants should have access to, then to go through the process without having to go through the arduous task of going through this entire process. And still, millions of dollars will be going to lawyers, not to inspectors, not to rent relief. It's going to go to defend someone. And again, even the best lawyer is not going to be able to do that. And lastly, the development impact fees, Affordable Housing Trust Fund dollars are being taken out. And yes, development impact fees are throughout the country. How many of them are taking money out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to go into a lawyer's pocket?
With that said, we have to go to a commercial break.
Consumer Carpets, 3408 Kennedy Boulevard in the Jersey City Heights. Your one-stop store for residential and commercial floor treatments. Carpeting, linoleum, tiles, laminates, hardwood floors, area rugs, remnants. All major brands, all in stock. Free estimates, same-day installation. Consumer Carpets is saving, selection, installation. Credit cards and debit cards accepted. Financing available. Consumer Carpets, price to fit your budget, installation to fit your schedule. On the net at ConsumerCarpets.com. Consumer Carpets, Jersey City, 201-792-2712.
Well, we're back. And, you know, behind the scenes, we were just having a general conversation. And I was just saying, really, I'm to a point of, I wish that everybody can really sit at the table. Being the council president of this city here, I look at the developer side, I look at the tenant's side, I look at the small business side, I look at everybody's side. And it seemed like because we all have to live here together, I think it should be a point that we sit at the table and see how we can make everyone's life better. Case in point, if developers are building, all right? You know we need affordable housing. It's a crisis throughout the country. This is nothing new. Why can't you just say, okay, we're going to build at least three or four units in what we're building? Why must I constantly have to write an ordinance for you to do it? You're here. This is where I'm at with it. And for people who are, you got slum landlords out here, you know who they are. I mean, I'm quite sure at, at a time and point, y'all are all at the table, sitting, talking. And if you know a friend is being a slum landlord, you should get on him and say, "Listen, I don't want you to have, you know, ruin our reputation." Because the moment you ruin our reputation, that means we, the city's coming after you. So it's, to me, we have to, we have to sit down at the table and see how we can really make it work. I'm listening to both sides of this conversation, all right? And I can see at this table here, well, at this circle here, we really want the right thing for the residents of the city of Jersey City. We're not trying to bleed a landlord. That's not our intent. Okay, we appreciate what you do. We appreciate you contributing. We do. The small guy, we appreciate you. But there are people out here who are hurting. There are people out here who've been abused. We can't overlook that. So at this point, we need to sit down and see how we can really come together, work together to make the quality of life better for the residents of the city. Enforcement is needed, okay? It is not enough enforcement. You probably, you know, deal with people who are hard enforcers and you, you know that they're out here. But she's getting information that, you know, people are not being forceful. So that lets us know there's a gap.
Yes.
All right? So the question is, what are we really going to do? Are we really going to sit at the table and say, okay, how can we make the lives of the residents of Jersey City better? Because we all living here. You know, I'm tired of pulling from this side and pulling from that side and people saying you don't care. No, I'm born and raised here.
Absolutely.
I care a lot about the people here. I'm just trying to figure out, how can I deal with slum landlords?
Absolutely.
How can I come after slum landlords? Because to me, people need to have a quality of life. People need to live in a healthy environment. And right now, for some people, they are not. So we need to sit down and figure out how we can do this. Okay, we have right to counsel. The reason why? Because some people wasn't being treated fairly. That's why they said, okay, let's come up with a law. We just don't come up with this stuff. Something happens for somebody to say, "We need to write a law against it." And that's just the truth. Go ahead.
I just think that there is enough services out there that you do not need the right to counsel. I'm definitely in favor of having affordable housing and what it takes to have affordable housing in Jersey City. But I don't see that every person is entitled to right to counsel, but they have the ability to get counsel in Hudson County. And I don't think that that part of the ordinance is, is needed. I, when I read the ordinance and I see things such as, there's many frivolous filings or retaliatory evictions, I don't see that to be the case at all. I really don't. I see more retaliation from tenants than I do landlords. And there's a lot of things a tenant can do to make a landlord's life miserable, and they do it.
And that's why I said it's both sides. She experienced and she talked to tenants that the landlord make their life hell. And that's just the truth. It makes their life hell.
Legally, trying to get people out of their homes.
Correct.
And, you know, I want to respond to something that Ms. Harkan and Ms. Paul said about existing services and existing funding. And like I said before, no one is denying that the work that the Waterfront Project or these other organizations are doing aren't incredible, aren't helping, but they're limited in their scope because a lot of them rely on federal funding. Funding that, you know, increased during the pandemic because we saw an increase in the safety net that was necessary to take care of people during the pandemic. A lot of that money is now starting to dry up. A lot of that money also has a lot of strings attached. So some of these LSPs have conflicts where, for example, they, I mentioned before, the service, service towards undocumented folks. Some of these LSPs have that restriction because of what's written in, you know, guidances for HUD or other sources where federal funding is coming from. So when we're having a conversation about universality, it's not only just about folks with different incomes. It's also all sorts of different statuses that we need to keep in mind.
Well, let me ask you something, okay? When you said undocumented immigrants, okay? Because if you house this in the city, and the city always have to produce numbers, we have to follow guidelines, you know, statewide or whatever, because we just can't give away money. We always have to have a record on, you know, who we distribute money to and how many people, that type of thing. There has to be a record. So when it comes to undocumented immigrants, how can the city cover them if they apply for this right to counsel? Because then if our books, if somebody say, okay, let's produce your books. We want to see how many people you gave it to. And if there are undocumented immigrants in there, we don't have certain information on them because they may not have it, we just have their name and we saying we gave them this help, then how can, you know, what can we do? Because I know when it comes to undocumented immigrants, even when we had a situation when our, our leadership changed far as the country, they came after people who was undocumented and they came and locked them up. So what safety can we have as a city to protect them? Because we are a sanctuary city. That's my concern, because I know government changes. And it was proven when we had a government, he came right after everybody who was undocumented and they was just picking them up anywhere. So how can we protect them with the right to counsel? And knowing that it's housed in a city, we have to keep records. You know, that, that was my concern for undocumented immigrants.
I think that's a fair concern, but I think it sort of goes back to the idea of a really arduous bureaucratic process makes it hard for everyone, especially folks who don't have a lot of documentation available to them. I think emphasizing the fact that Jersey City is a sanctuary city.
Right.
Emphasizing the educational component of the ordinance, where if folks do come and get help, they know that they're not going to face retaliation for their immigration status. We no longer have ICE detention in Hudson County.
For now.
For now.
That's what I'm saying.
Making sure that we don't have those situations where someone's life could very much be in danger.
Correct.
And I think also, it's good to point out that evictions for anybody, but especially for people who are the most vulnerable, are extremely destabilizing. They prevent people from being able to seek housing in the future, seek safe housing in the future. It prevents people from holding out jobs, holding down jobs from having access to benefits. Kids are taken out of school. All of these different effects, these domino effects can lead to a really tragic situation for someone's life. So stopping that from the start, keeping people in their homes, that's really what it's all about.
We'll be, hold your thought right there. We'll be right back.
Panapinto Properties, Jersey City. Shaping the workplace with state-of-the-art office spaces and addresses your company desires. Building residences that define your home environment, adjacent to all modes of transportation with onsite parking available. The right address, the right lease. Call 201-521-9000 or visit online at Panapintodevelopment.com. Panapinto Properties, building Jersey City for everyone.
And we're back. And before we went out, Wendy, you wanted to say something. So what is it you wanted to share?
Yes, I also wanted to reiterate that programs and organizations like Waterfront Project is, they're doing amazing work. And yes, they are limited in scope and with the resources that they have. But when we're talking about the issues that lead someone to need the services of the Waterfront Project, this ordinance is not solving for the problem that is bringing a person to Waterfront Project's door. We are solving for and leapfrogging over that issue, going right from you need assistance to an area of litigation, where the person who is in need, where they are living in a building. And again, when we're talking about these development impact fees and developers, renters are living in two, three, four family homes. So the person that is paying rent to that two-family, when they can't make their rent, the owner of that two-family home can't make their mortgage either. And for someone who is undocumented and in the shadows, where they are fearful of coming forward and the retaliation, the property owner at least can direct the person to get that assistance. So not solving for that problem, which is the rental assistance. We have not come to the table, and you just mentioned, having a conversation. How can we come up with a solution for people that are the property owners, the three-family homeowner, that may have a tenant, whether they're documented or not, that is not in the ordinance, right? To have a solution for rental assistance. We've bypassed, we've leapfrogged, we've jumped over finding that solution, and we've gone right to an ordinance to, again, create that hurdle that overall will have a chilling effect on the entire development community. This is not going to encourage nor solve for the assistance that's needed. So the conversation is welcome. Having the conversation with the stakeholders of how we're going to use the existing Affordable Housing Trust Fund to provide the assistance and then look at other areas, training, other things, to make sure that someone doesn't fall into this and property owners alike can help support their renters to get back on their feet and move forward.
Okay, Julia, give us your opinion.
So if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Be stating a few closing statements.
Sure.
I just want to close by reiterating our final points, that we would like free legal representation for all tenants, which are accessed through an office within the City Hall, the Right to Counsel Office, which not only provides these services, but also connects renters and, quite frankly, landlords as well, with services needed to close some of these gaps. So like I mentioned before, connecting with rental assistance programs, helping landlords and tenants who live in buildings of all sizes. And something that Ms. Paul mentioned before as well is talking about whether or not these programs are effective. And what we see across the country, even if we see that certain right to counsel programs are limited in scope, they still have immense benefits towards tenants. In New York City, prior to the passage of right to counsel, only 1% of tenants received legal representation, where 95% of landlords did. Now the scales have flipped. There is 56% of renters are now receiving representation. And that means that about 84% of tenants who have representation available, who have an attorney in housing court, are able to keep their homes and fight eviction. Because as a campaign, after speaking to, as I mentioned before, thousands of renters all across Jersey City, no one should have to be forced to be their own advocate when the scales are so tipped against their favor. And as I mentioned before, we are in an affordability crisis. We want to pass the developer fee ordinance to fund right to counsel and also promote the construction of more affordable units in Jersey City. It won't apply to people who are following the IZO, for example, but will help encourage more affordable housing. And it'll be paid for by the people who have directly contributed to the affordability crisis because we're seeing these increasingly high rents across Jersey City.
Okay, Roberta.
I just want to say that part of the reason there are such high increases in rent is due to the fact that the costs have gone up. We've been in a time of very high inflation. And tenants may not realize or understand the fact that when those increases are 10% or 15%, it's due to the fact that the landlord's costs went up. We do have the ability, a tenant does have the ability to challenge a rent increase if it's unconscionable, which in the end will become the decision of a judge through the judge's discretion. I advise my clients not to do a rent increase more than once every 12, once a year. No, no, not more than once a year. And I give advice based on various factors. But I know that it probably, a lot of tenants have had high increases, but you have to understand where it's coming from. And you cannot blame a landlord when he can barely make his bills and then has to pass along the cost.
I mean, I think the point about inflation is a good one. And a lot of people that are suffering because of increased costs are the regular working people of Jersey City, the regular average tenant who is seeing costs and their rent go up, but seeing their wages stagnate. So that automatically puts them in a playing field where their rights can't be enforced. So this is very much going to empower- So this is very much going to empower folks to be able to stand up if they are facing these unconscionably high rents, for instance.
It's not the landlord's fault that their wage is stagnating. You know, this is now more of a social policy issue, but it's not the landlord's fault.
Well, it is a social policy that we're trying to pass. And we understand that it may not be an individual landlord's fault that a person's wages are not increasing, but it fits into this larger tapestry of why they might not be able to pay their rent, why they might be falling on hard times. And we want to make sure that the city is supporting these folks in every way that they can. And I actually forgot to mention, if folks would be interested in getting either involved with the campaign or in learning more about the ordinances, the nitty-gritty of our policy, as well as the organizing that has gone behind building it up, you can check us out at righttocounciljc.org on May 10th, if it's okay if I mention this.
Hopefully, yeah.
At the City Council meeting, we are expecting the, or both ordinance to be re-presented for their first reading. And May 24th will likely be the second reading, the second hearing, and therefore the vote on both developer fees and right to counsel. And we hope to have tenants all across the city coming and speaking on behalf.
So in, in closing, with everything that is happening with the property owners and what is being proposed, what we want to do is, as the council president said, have the conversation, have the conversation with the stakeholders to find the solutions, find the solutions prior to someone who is going to need these services. And for the property owners that are going to have the unintended consequence of passing down these fees, and again, raising the rent and making it more challenging, more challenging for the property owners or anyone who is looking to build housing here. Additionally, for any of the property owners that also have any questions regarding the proposed ordinance, can reach out to me at the Jersey City Apartment Owners Association website, jcaowa.com. Again, my name is Wendy Paul, and I serve as the executive director of the association.
Well, there you have it. Everyone gave their last remarks, and I will welcome you to come to the council meeting. At any time we have a council meeting, your voice is very important. There is a segment in there that we have public speaking, and believe it or not, I am listening to everything you say. All right? So please, let's do good by one another. That's, that's what I would like to leave with. Let's do good by one another. We can disagree to agree, because our whole intention is to do what's right for the residents of the city of Jersey City. So stay safe, have a nice day, come see us again at Jersey City. Council President Joyce Waterman, now you know.
Follow us on social media, on Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook.